Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Lamson? Here. Please stand for the silent prayer and flag salute. Councilmember Campion, will you do the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Don, would you replay the statement, please? This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 24th and Saturday, May 25th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? I would like to move J2 to right after consent, the community benefit funding grant. Everyone agrees? Anything else?
Commission on Aging.
Did you want to move them up to?
To after.
After?
Benefit funding grant, we'll do it that way.
Okay, then we'll do after that, we'll do the commission on aging, which is J1. Okay. We have a presentation by the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2017/2018 Annual Report.
They're saying they can't hear you.
Just get closer. There you go.
She's here to answer any questions you may have, thank you. So Measure R, as many of you, as all of you already know, is a half-cent sales tax that the citizens approved back in 2008. There is an ordinance that the council approved that basically provides for a citizens oversight committee. That oversight committee reviews the expenditures made against these funds to ensure that they are in compliance with the ordinance. The ordinance states that these monies are to be spent on public safety services above and beyond what is budgeted by the city in this 2007-2008 budget. So before you is the annual report for the fiscal year 1819, excuse me, 1718. The committee meets quarterly, they've been reviewing the expenditures every quarter. They've asked a lot of questions. They've also received the audited financials. And they've prepared the attached report. Final page of that report shows the revenues, expenditures, and final fund balance for this fund. Other than vacancies, there was nothing unusual about this year. Are there any questions?
120,000 variance at the end, that's not the fund balance, that's just how much it differed between years.
Correct, so the revenue came in a little bit over what was originally budgeted by 51,000 and then the expenditures came in a little bit under by 60,000, 69,000. So the 120 is, the fund is better than the budget originally anticipated by 120,000.
So it says we did 3% better on revenues and then we came under budget 4%, right?
Correct.
So would you, I mean the 3%, just curious, is that just better, more sales tax than we thought we were going to bring in?
Yes.
And we were under because we?
Spent less.
Well, obviously, but. I mean, are we, I've asked, but I wasn't given a straight answer. Are all the Measure R positions filled right now or are there any vacant?
No, they are not.
So how many are vacant currently?
Two, three?
Three.
Three.
Are they all officers, just what, can you just explain which ones?
Two officers and one dispatcher.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I forgot about the dispatcher. So there's 10.5 positions in this funding. Most of them are officers, a couple of dispatchers.
There's seven officers, two dispatchers, half of a records clerk, and then the professional standards officer.
Maybe just for public record, Ms. Martin, could you state the purpose of the Measure R? What's it?
Oh, absolutely, so it's to, sorry, it's basically to supplement the police budget so that we can decrease gangs, drugs, that type of behavior in the city of Galt.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a comment. The budget year that this Measure R is tied to, is it '07-'08 or '08-'09?
'07-'08.
So we have to keep that minimum level of funding before Measure R money can be used?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed here on page two of the report, it looks like the committee, and I've been to a committee meeting, they asked many questions, but it sounds like staff was able to provide enough information to determine that the Measure R funds are in, being spent in accordance with the ordinance?
At this point, yes.
Is there any additional information, Ms. Martin, that you would like to add as being part of the oversight?
Not at this time.
The council should be aware of, nothing? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you for coming, thank you for answering questions.
I'd like to just thank Kemi Martin and the rest of the committee. This is on their volunteer time and we really appreciate their diligence to this committee. Thank you.
Alright, public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered.
Thank you. So we do have quite a few at the time of the item, but I have one that doesn't have a subject. And so that would be Jean Davenport?
Hi there, I'm Jean Davenport, I live in the city of Galt. And I'm here tonight to discuss the garbage rate increase. I thought I'd give it a couple of weeks because you guys had enough to deal with at the last meeting. But the way this has all come about, regardless of where you guys stand on this, the fact that you guys passed something that you didn't read, it just, it baffles my mind that you would pass something on recommendation from staff. Regardless of that, you guys should be reading what you, you know, what you're going to pass on to the ratepayers. I like Dave Acareza, I like his family, I like him a lot. They're good people, they're a good employer, they're good for Galt. This rate increase is just, it doesn't jive, it just does not jive. 300 to 700 to 900 percent on some businesses. It's just not right. The city manager, you know, said it was a fair to both city and residents, but they didn't, I don't understand how he could say that before he left, he said it was fair to both. Steve Winkler said there were no high fees involved. It's his quote, not mine. After they were done, he felt it was fair and equitable to everybody. I don't see how you can sit there and say, even to a kid buying a candy bar with a 700 percent increase is fair and equitable. At no time is 700 percent fair and equitable. The fact that we're going forward with this and a lot of these recommendations have come from administration, the administration actually retired, now you guys brought him back on a consulting basis. They did this last year, you guys voted on this in September, I believe, and you guys just kind of like said, okay, it's going to go forward, and you guys okayed it. You guys need to rescind that. You need to do what you need to do, get with the attorney, rescind this, the vote that you guys made, and start over. Because it's not mandated for another year or two, so you don't really need to inflict that corporal punishment on any business in this town at this time, period. You need to stop it now because you're going to lose good people in this community that have been a part of this community for a long time. Terry Parker, she had somebody speak for her at the last meeting and she said that hers went up about 700 percent and she's going to increase everybody's bill by $100 a month. That doesn't cover what her increase was, so she's going to swallow some. I talked to the people that own Holy Ravioli. Their bill went from, I think it was $1,700 a year to $11,000. It's just, it's just, it's not copacetic, it's just not good. I don't care what you guys say. And when you guys brought Mr. Winkler back on as a consultant and he's involved in all these, where are we at with the other entities or the other things that he's working on? Mr. Lozano said, you know, when you guys brought him back, you wanted to see results. Are these the type of results that you really want to see? Because you have to go into the community and face it. I mean, it's just, it's, it's just not, it's not professional the way this was handled. You guys need to stop and think about it. I know most of you all got donations from Mr. Acareza and you run for city council, and that's fine. I don't want to, you know, mix that up. I just want to bring it out because I think we all legitimately believe we're doing the right thing, but you guys made a mistake on this. You three, the three new ones can't be blamed for this in the sense that you took somebody's word for it. But you need to stop it now. You need to just forget about it, just say, you know, we're going to go back to the drawing board on this? Make it feasible for businesses so they won't have to close? Because if you don't, I think you're going to end up with Starbucks, McDonald's, and things like that, and that's all you're going to have around here. Everybody else is going to go. Mr. Sandu, I, you know, I just imagine what your garbage bill went to and how, you know, affects you going forward. Because the bottom line is, businesses should be treated with the same respect as taxpayers and I think they should go forward. I see it, you don't have to stop me. But I just think that you need to literally go back to the drawing board on this and start over and get something that we can all live with. Because this is totally unfair.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Alright, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Campion?
Yeah, I was at the Habitat Conservation Plan Committee yesterday. It appears as though all permits with state and federal agencies should be completed and signed, delivered. June and July of this year, they're planning a celebration of sorts the week of June 17th. So I think council members will be getting notified on that. So that's pretty much what we covered yesterday.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Farmer? Alright. So I attended the safety meeting last night with the new safety chair, Councilmember Sandu. So we had a, we had a nice meeting, it was short. Got some things to look at and we're working on our year-end report to present to council. Consent calendar. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes that submitted, receive and file warrants that submitted, adopt a resolution approving the planning commission meeting time change from 6:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the regularly scheduled meeting held the second Thursday of each month? And adopt a resolution, one, authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year contract with an option for a third year with North Star Chemical Incorporated for supply of liquid sodium hyperchloride in the amount not to exceed $38,000 for fiscal year 2019-20 and $39,800 for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And, number two, execute a two-year contract with an option for a third year with SNF Polydine Incorporated for supply of liquid catatonic polymer in the amount not to exceed $35,200 for the fiscal year 2019-20 and $36,000 for the fiscal year 2020-21.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Campion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Next up is J2, the Community Benefit Funding Grant. Ms. Suddles?
Community Benefit Funding Grant, the recommendation is to review the community benefit grant applications for fiscal year 1920 and provide direction to staff regarding approval of the funding amounts. City council started this program back in the year 2012. The first year the program was funded was 2013-14 fiscal year. You have included in your agenda report are the three applications the city clerk's office received. The Galt Area Historical Society is requesting $10,000. Galt District Chamber of Commerce, $10,000. And Perfectly Posibles, $3,000. Attached to the agenda report are the applications, the policy, and the past awarded grants list. Sorry, I forgot.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, because I am actually serve on the board of one of the nonprofits that's applying for this, I'd like to recuse myself from the vote on this.
Same thing, my mayor and the council member, I'm also a board of director of the Chamber of Commerce. So there may be interest or conflict, I will recuse myself from this meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So I believe we have discussion before we do the public comment, correct?
Yes.
All right. So... Council, do you want to have the public comment before we have the discussion?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. That'd be better. I'd like to call Gail Weber with the Galt Chamber of Commerce. And then after that, Janice Barsetti-Grey. And then after that will be Kim Jones.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and small group tonight. My name's Gail Weber. I am representing the Galt Chamber of Commerce. Our board president, Bonnie Rodriguez, is actually giving out scholarships tonight, so she was not able to be here. It says in our application that we are planning a citywide event. Galt turns one hundred and fifty years old this year, and we would like to have a huge birthday party, free to the entire community. You've already granted the event sponsorship to close down Fourth Street for us, which we greatly appreciate. We are doing some fundraising through selling Galt one hundred and fifty gear. We have T-shirts, coffee cups, and stuff like that, and they're available for sale online. We have a lot of money to raise. We are trying to raise thirty thousand dollars. One of the plans we would like to do if we get the grant money is to have a big fireworks display and possibly a big concert in Veterans Field. All this costs money. We are trying to do this as free as possible to the entire community. We have hired entertainers to come. We are paying for a tintype photographer to come and do photos. He can only do so many. We are looking for old-fashioned vendors, like a hot dog cart, and a popcorn wagon, and maybe a guy on one of those big bicycles and stuff like that. But all these entertainers and stuff cost money. We've got like a kazoo band coming, a banjo band coming. They've got a whole list of entertainers they're doing. But this is a one-shot deal. We only turn one hundred and fifty years old one time. And we would like to make this event as huge as possible and free to everybody that comes. The chamber is shouldering one hundred percent of the expenses of this event. And since we are not a 501(c)(3), a lot of grants are not available to us. We are a 501(c)(6). So this is one of our few funding sources that we can come to. And that's pretty much about it. Does anyone have any questions? I mean, there's whatever's in our application.
I have one question. Under item number four, it says the overall budget for this event is thirty-five thousand.
Correct.
But then on the front page, it says total project costs thirty thousand. So I'm wondering which it is.
Included in this event is a Lincoln Highway Celebration event. They're coming through the Lincoln Highway. They're doing a reenactment of the old Eisenhower trip. So we have them coming through on the day before. And so we would, part of that is we're hosting them, we're going to feed them, and we would also like to have a celebration of that. So it's basically thirty thousand for the actual birthday party, and then it's five thousand dollars for the Lincoln Highway project.
Well, I'm looking again at item four. It says thirty-five. Actually, if you add up the numbers, I come up with twenty-five. And then if you add the five...
I didn't do the budget, sorry. I'm just here reading it.
Okay. So it's actually, it appears to be thirty thousand dollars total, including the Lincoln Way budget.
Okay.
I don't know, that's what I interpret out of this, though.
I was basically handed this today and asked to come speak, so I have not, I was not involved in the budget process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Lozano? Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Janice Barsetti-Grey with the Galt Area Historical Society.
Mayor Lamson, city council members, members of the audience. I am Janice Barsetti-Grey, and president of the Galt Area Historical Society. And I'm here on behalf of our nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization requesting your consideration for the, excuse me, ten thousand community benefit grant for our current project, which is renovating the one-room schoolhouse from the Liberty Township, which was built in 1854. The Galt Area Historical Society received this building through a private donation recently. It presently is located on Fourth Street between A and B Streets. We have selected a bid from a house mover to relocate this building to the Ray House Museum on Oak Street. The cost of that was eight thousand five hundred dollars. This move will happen within the next several weeks, and that's not part of what we're asking for at this point. The Liberty Township was founded in 1852 by Chisholm Cooper Fuget from Liberty, Missouri. The town of Liberty was located south of Dry Creek, east of the Lower Sacramento Road or the Lincoln Highway, near what is now Liberty Road. The town was constructed with wood shipped around the horn from the east coast, because we didn't have the Panama Canal in those days. That is where most of the wood came from for the Liberty School. This building is currently on the historic register. All that is left of Liberty City is the Liberty Cemetery, which the Galt Area Historical Society owns and maintains, as well as the Elliott Cemetery. Once the railroad laid their tracks where it is today, Liberty no longer existed. Some buildings or parts of them came to Galt, as did this one-room schoolhouse around 1870. The funds requested under this grant will be used by the Galt Area Historical Society for renovation of this building back to a 1854 one-room schoolhouse. It will become part of our Ray House Museum tours. Renovation would require a foundation to put the schoolhouse on. The wood repair will have to match historic construction methods, placement of distressed wood to match the historic facade, repainting the inside and outside, installation of period windows, abatement of any possible lead paint, and purchase of period furniture. We have already had people wanting to give us donations of old desks from that period and some potbelly stoves to match that period. We estimate that the cost of completion for the project will be about eighteen thousand seven hundred. Probably, as we know, if we have to hire more out, probably the cost would go up. But as always, we have fundraisers, and we always appreciate private donations. Once this project is completed, the schoolhouse will become a museum to create a learning experience for children and adults. The Galt Area Historical Society has a long and successful history of working with the city of Galt to utilize grant funding to preserve and protect the history of Galt. In particular, the society and the city have previously worked together to develop the historic Ray House Museum, the site of which we intend to move the schoolhouse. In addition, the city has assisted the society in the development of aspects of the McFarland Living History Ranch. Both the Ray and the McFarland are examples of successful renovations completed by the Galt Area Historical Society. Both were in disrepair when we took them on as a restoration project. Both have been fully renovated and successfully maintained by the society over the years. And they both provide the community a view of its past because of the partnership we have built with the community organizations such as the city of Galt. Both sites facilitate the city's efforts to attract people and associated businesses to the city by providing culturally significant sites that attract interest from travelers, regional schools, persons seeking venues for weddings, festivals, events, et cetera. This all provides an economic impact for our city. The Ray House Museum is the only museum in Galt and is open to the public and schools on scheduled basis. The Galt Area Historical Society has made a concerted effort to increase available activities for the community with specific focus on children to create interesting and fun learning experiences. With this in mind, the one-room schoolhouse will be restored so that children and adults can visualize how children would have learned in the 1800s. I'm personally very passionate about everything our society does. This project for me is one of the most significant that we're taking on. Galt will be one hundred and fifty years old this year. Liberty would have been one hundred and sixty-seven years old, and the schoolhouse is one hundred and sixty-five years old. I have visions of school desks, teacher's desk, a chair near the front for the teacher, a chalkboard, an American flag with thirty-one stars, a picture of George Washington, a picture of the president in 1854, which was Millard Fillmore, school books, school bells, perhaps mannequins of children dressed in period clothes, as well as a teacher and the potbelly stoves. I'm watching a lot of Little House on the Prairie to get some ideas. So we are a society of volunteers who at times have to work with professionals to accomplish our tasks. I hope that you have the same vision that myself and the Galt Area Historical Society has in renovating this one-room schoolhouse. We ask that you award the ten thousand dollar community benefit grant for this project. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me on this?
Let me ask. So quite the vision you have. How did it get to that spot? And it's being donated by...
I haven't quite nailed that down yet. I'm sure it got here, I'm sure they didn't have a mover like we're having to pay. I'm sure it was by a horse and pulling it somehow. I have no idea. But we've narrowed it down to about 1870. At one point, Baxter Sperry, if any of you are familiar with who Baxter Sperry was, she was a schoolteacher at Galt High. I think she died in 1996. But she had a printing press, and we have a lot of her memorabilia in the Ray House, where she actually made a lot of, she sketched a lot of the old buildings here in Galt. So we actually have her dies. We don't have a printing press, but, so she lived there for a while, but we, you know, at some point, I would like to track how it got here. And we don't seem to have any historical records on it, so how it got here. But the best, I read some of her books, because she did write books, was about 1870 that she felt that it came over here, so.
Wow. And it's being donated by...
The Henkey Trust, yeah. The Henkey Trust, yeah.
Henkey Trust, okay.
Any other questions, weren't we?
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, Ms. Kim Jones with Perfectly Possible.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. My name is Kim Jones. I'm on the board of Perfectly Possible. We're a nonprofit organization here in Galt that goes out and helps to, we do what's called TNR, it's trap, neuter, and return. So we go out and trap all the feral cats within any of the community areas. We do a lot of work with cow waste. We've done a lot of work with several dairies here in town. I know we've done a lot of work out at McFarland Ranch. We try to go out, trap as many as we can, bring them in, foster them. We get all the mothers neutered and spayed all the babies and everything. If they're adoptable animals, then we foster them out to where at least we can get them raised and get them adopted out. If they're not, then we do obviously have to return them. But at least we fixed them to the point that there's no population growing like crazy anymore. There's two seasons throughout the year that we do this. There's a lot of it that goes on in early March and then September area times that we have one member and her volunteers that go out every single weekend. They've trapped sometimes up to twenty, twenty-five cats at a time that they then bring back. And she raises all of these in her garage. And so all the money that we get is obviously from any small donations that we can get from the city to help us out with this, adopting out the animals, any adoption fees that we get, and then small local funding that people just say, hey, I want to help you out. You know, if they call us up and they say, you know, we found this litter of kittens. Can you help us? Galene will go over and she'll take them all in and do everything that we can with them. So we just don't have any other ways of finding funding. But, you know, we are asking for just a small amount of three thousand. You guys have given us more in the past, and then it's been able to help us out a lot to, because we go through a lot of food. Vet fees are very expensive for some of these animals. We do a lot of work with the Bradshaw Shelter. So we go up there, they help us out a lot with sometimes getting free spades and neuters, depending on the time of year. We get so many that we can go through and get. But when you're taking in twenty-plus kittens, cats a weekend, it goes through real fast. So we're just looking to hopefully help get as much as we can from you guys to get some help. So I appreciate your time. Is there any questions I can answer?
Do you work in conjunction with the police department anymore?
We do. They were able to get us some chip readers, so we have worked with that. A lot of times if we have somebody that we can go out and read them, and then we can tell them to take them to the police department, they do have the cages that they can hopefully shelter some of the animals, if they've got readers at least, if they've got chips in them, for people to come and get their animals right away so that they don't end up at shelters.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. What do you think, council?
I think there's more money requested than we have available.
Yeah.
You know, and I think they're all very good efforts in the community and for the community. I would be inclined to come up with a method of dividing the monies that are available. Obviously, not everybody's going to get what they want, but I think it would still assist in their efforts.
I think they're all great organizations that do a lot for our community. And clearly, we have more requests than what we have allocated in the budget. But having said that, I would think that, and I'm just going to throw this out there, and I was contacted by a couple of other board members from Perfectly Possible, which was very helpful because I knew what they did. I just didn't know the extent and some of the history of it, so. And I appreciate all the work you do as well. One of the groups that I wasn't as familiar with, so. But I would suggest maybe we split the ten thousand equally amongst the two that, not in total, but the two that requested ten thousand, I would suggest, and this is just first blush and I'm open for conversation, but four thousand for each, the Historical Society and the chamber, and then two thousand for Perfectly Possible. That'd be my first blush at this. And again, like I said, I'm open for...
My personal notes were, or personal thoughts on the division was very close to that, and I would be agreeable to that suggestion.
I mean, it's great to have an opportunity to benefit the community like this, but then it's also stressful because there's so much need in having to make some decisions. So I tend to agree with the both of you. I like the division.
That's in the form of a motion, I would suggest.
Yeah. Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we award Galt Area Historical Society four thousand dollars. Galt Chamber of Commerce, four thousand dollars. Perfectly Possible, two thousand dollars, for a total of ten thousand dollars.
Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer, Councilmember Sandu, Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes. Three with two abstaining.
No, two absent.
Two absent. Absent?
Absent.
Three and two absent? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officer, do you want to tell them to come back in, please? Congratulations. I wish it could be more for everybody. All right, back to the agenda. And next, we have the Commission on Aging Member Appointment. I've got to wait for Councilmember Sandu. So Bob, did you want to talk on the appointment or just in general? Okay. Okay. Come on up, we'll get ready. So Tina needs to give the agenda report for the Commission on Aging, and then let her do that, and then we'll do the public. But stay right there, you're fine. We're doing the appointment right now.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight's report is for Councilmember Sandu to appoint a community member to the Commission on Aging to fill a vacant position with the remaining term ending December 2022. His previous appointment resigned in March of this year due to moving out of state. The city clerk's office received one application from Marie Hall, who is a previous Commission on Aging member. Councilmember Sandu has had a chance to review the application, and we are just needing an official appointment.
Yes. Okay. Okay. And we do have some public comments on that. All right. Mr. Ballier?
This is meant for tall people, but whatever.
Tina's tall.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members, and Madam Clerk, I want to take this opportunity to thank each one of you for your part in reconstituting the Commission on Aging. I want to thank, in a special... I want to thank in a special way Vice Mayor Farmer for his steadfast support and action to change the relevant city ordinance. I want to thank you, Madam Clerk, believe it or not, for your action that brought about this eventual change in the makeup of the commission. I know you had to follow the law and I respect that. I want to thank you, Mayor Lamson, and you, Councilman Campion, for your words of encouragement as my patience with the bureaucratic process ran thin. And I also want to assure you, Councilman Campion, of my continued respect as you wrestled with the decision to vote against the change and eventually did oppose it because I realized you based that decision on principle. And finally, I want to express my appreciation to all of you who ultimately voted in favor of this change. I realize that this change affected other commissions as well. As a result of your action, the commission has been busy working towards the opening of the Galt Senior Resource Center, which is slated to open by June 15, just around the corner. And we are working on other pending issues that involve establishing communications with you, members of the City Council, not just coming here to provide an annual report, but to keep you up to date on what the commission is doing and encouraging you to interact with us if you see a concern or issue regarding our seniors in the appropriate and lawful way in the future. We are also entertaining the possibility of interacting with the other commissions in this, in this city for the benefit of our seniors when that is appropriate and possible. Last and certainly not least, my thanks go to Director Solis, who is not here, for his unwavering support and encouragement, counseling patients of which I have little, as things looked kind of dreary from December through February, for his continued support as well as the support of his capable staff under the direction of Ms. Monica Lopez, as the commission is now reconstituted and ready and determined to advocate for the seniors of our city. And finally, I want to welcome back my friend Marie Hall to the commission and I hope that she gets sworn at, I mean sworn in before Thursday's meeting. Thank you and have a good evening.
Oh, you're prepared?
Any questions?
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
So do we vote on the appointment or just?
No, it's just.
Okay. Done deal. Thank you, Councilmember Sandu.
Thank you. Congratulations to the Mary Hall.
All right, back to. Regular calendar. Do we, do we have any Schedule Matters? Okay. City Council Office, approve allocation of $500 to the Elk Grove Galt Community Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT, from Mayor Lamson's discretionary funds in the fiscal year 2018, 2019. So CERT is an organization that provides medical response and help at a lot of our festivals and they do this free of charge and they're funded, they, it's hard for them to get their funding, so I'd like to give 500 of my discretionary funds to the CERT. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson. Aye. Vote passes, five zero. City Manager's Office, authorize an on-call consulting service contract with R3 Consulting Group. Mr. Haglund?
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, good evening. Tonight we're seeking the council's approval for an additional scope of work for R3 Consulting Group, which has previously provided the city with advice and counsel relative to solid waste and recycling services and on a number of different occasions over the years. They were most recently selected through an RFP process within the last year, I believe, and we want to provide them with an additional scope of work relative to helping us update our solid waste ordinance, to help us to ensure that we meet compliance standards with the California Department of Recycling, CalRecycle, and also to assist us with some lingering issues relative to our new franchise agreement with California Waste Removal Systems. I'm not sure if Mr. Selling has anything else to add, but this, we're happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So if we were to not go with R3 and get another consultant to kind of look at these issues with us, would it be, would it cost a lot more money because they'd have to start at the beginning?
Well, certainly a, another group would have to go through the, some of the very things that I'm going through, looking at all of the underlying information and documents and would most likely have to do what I have been doing and, and Mr. Selling has been doing, trying to reach out and talk with R3 about some of the initial questions we have. But the work that we have to do is both immediately and in the future, I think is best served by R3, who was there during the process of establishing the programmatic elements of our franchise agreement as well as the, the rate elements of the franchise agreement. And then as we look at modifying the city's solid waste ordinance over the course of the next year, I, I equate it, just putting on a community development director hat, I, I equate it to making your, ensuring that your zoning code is consistent with your general plan when you adopt a new general plan or when you adopt changes to the general plan. And so we have a new franchise agreement, we have very significant changes that have occurred at the state level and we're nonetheless required to have the, the proper ordinance provisions in order to meet some of those, those modifications. So they were the group that helped us to define and design those programs. R3 was assigned tasks by the city to either analyze something or to help define what a program might look like and they provided that advice back to the city. That is really the sum total of, of their work on behalf of this jurisdiction. They are a firm that represents jurisdictions across California and across several other Western states. They are one of the leading experts in this area and I think that they have a good basis of knowledge dating back a number of years as to the, the city of Galt and its solid waste programs, and I think that having that would be of benefit in getting the job done more quickly and certainly I think it follows less expensive.
Thank you.
So Tom, I have a couple of questions. One might actually be for Mike. The funds, if we were to approve this, the funds, so first it states that it's, we're approving up to 20, up to $25,000 per fiscal year in a two-year budget, so if I'm understanding this correctly, we're approving up to $50,000 possibly over a two-year period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what would initially, what would the initial, I mean, just to bring them in, is their initial, like, it says it's on call, I mean, so I know that's not like, basically it's like as needed, so, I mean, what do you project the expenses here to be? Any, any guess?
I would probably, at, at the risk of not wanting to, you know, set the stage for them, so to speak, because I think we'd like to give them, you know, at least some key tasks that we see on the immediate forefront here, as well as, as the city manager noted, relative to the update of the ordinance, that's kind of a little bit midterm, I guess I would say, through the rest of the year, but, you know, it, I would say probably we're looking at somewhere in the range of 10, maybe $15,000 or something like that.
Okay. And my next question is, I think, for Tom. So Tom and I have had long discussions about this already and I came back to him for some questions, but I, I had some additional ones and I wanted to kind of state some ones that we already talked about. So what you've told me, Tom, is this is like a two-part thing, like, part of this is bringing them in as a consultant that we've used for them in the past because of their expertise and, so part A would be them helping us get our municipal code compliant with, with our, the franchise agreement which we designed, which includes all the mandates, all the changes that have, so we, we could make them match up.
With, with the, any relevant provisions of the franchise agreement, but also in conformance with state law.
Right, okay. And then the part B being that you've expressed to me that you think that there is some value here in having them assist us with, you know, trying to find a solution to our ongoing issue with the waste right now, so they've, they've had a relationship with cow waste, they had, they worked, they were one of the few parties still around that were involved in the original negotiations, so you think that they're of value in that aspect too if we need them?
Yes, they, they really are and, and, but let me make a couple of points. One, they only work with public jurisdictions, they only work with cities and counties or another governmental entity that, as a consultant to bring in that, that expertise. They do not work and never have worked for private waste haulers and, and, and won't work for private waste haulers. They work on behalf of the, the local community or jurisdiction that, that hires them. And then second, you make a valid point that we have discussed, that they are one of the common threads that remains here right now as to the most recent franchise negotiations because the, the principles are largely gone now. The, the previous city manager is no longer here, the previous Public Works Director retired as well, and, and so we, in, in having R3 remain as our consultant and provide us with this information is, I think, key. I think I would feel like I, I may have my hand tied, go into the, some of the, what we, of the work we have to do with my hand tied behind my back if I can't rely on a, the, the firm that provided its independent judgment and its independent information relative to the programs that are designed and part and parcel of the franchise agreement.
So with that being said, your point where they were the common thread and that they were involved in providing that initial judgment, you know, there's a lot of public scrutiny going on right now about this decision. It swayed heavily in my mind all week because people are saying, you know, why would we bring someone back who has been the cause of, you know, that's, you know, whether, that's the case or not, they were involved with that, this mess, and why would we do that? So what do you have to say with that?
Well, what I, what I have to say about that is that statements like that or, or any beliefs like that assume facts not in evidence, and I haven't seen anything thus far that would cause me to believe that R3 was the cause of our current franchise agreement. R3 was a consulting firm that the city properly relied upon to provide advice, to take a look and analyze situations, they were given assignments by, by the city to come back and, or to go analyze and to share that information with the city in order to prepare the city negotiators to negotiate the provisions of, of a franchise agreement. That's typically the way those sorts of things work. And I don't believe that it would be fair or proper based on what I've seen thus far to draw the conclusion that the current franchise agreement is, is or was either negotiated solely only or caused to be negotiated by a consulting firm that was simply on board to provide its independent judgment as to what it was, what the city was receiving from the other side and having to analyze.
So, just to recap on not going after RFP, I mean, this is, obviously you explained this is more like a timing issue, I mean, to go out to, to look for a different consulting just to wash our hands of, of the relationship with this company, we, I mean, obviously for me, one of the most important things is to resolve this waste issue we got and to, to go look elsewhere because of the timing, that were, you know, the timeframe we're trying to work in here as quick as possible, I mean, we could be adding considerable time.
Considerable time and I think additional cost.
Well, you know, Tom, I have to say, this is one of those moments where I look at both and I say, you know, if, if I don't approve this, then I'm going to be, you know, people are going to say you didn't do everything you could to try to resolve what's going on with, you know, the part B of this and, and, you know, I, I have to just say that I know you highly recommend this, you've stressed to me that, how much you recommend this, and I think it comes down to just an ultimate trust issue and what you're telling me I think I should do. So I appreciate you, you know, being straight with me that way and tell me, and so for that reason, I, I personally think that's something that I think we have to do.
Well, and, and just let me follow that statement up by saying that if, if at any time I became uncomfortable, for there was the discovery of some, a new piece of information that caused me to believe different, I'd be back before this council to, to address that as, as regards R3 Consulting. But I think that it would be important to know as well that this is a group that represents many, many California jurisdictions, they have represented many California, or many jurisdictions in this, in this county and in San Joaquin County alone, and they, they do that, again, from that, that position of independence and thus far I have not seen any reason to believe that was different here during the, the most recent franchise negotiations.
All right, thank you, Tom.
All right, do I have any other? Councilmember Campion, anything?
I'm good.
Councilmember Lozano?
I'd like to hear from public if we have public.
Okay, I think I've got one.
Before I comment, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah, I will, as Tom says, you highly recommending that company back, you know, we can hire that company back. I see they have a good reputation. For the last franchise contract they had with the city, I do understand there was a staff involved, there was a council involved, but they was not how heavy they was involved on that contract to looking at the contract to be fair, because I believe their statement somewhere is, is a fair contract, is a franchise contract. And when we going back, for example, the same issue, is not something they, or they, well, we bringing the same evidence, they might, we can say the same thing, how we trust this R3, especially for that specific region, I'm talking about we also going to get back with the other thing too, but how we, how we can reach that conclusion if somebody already make the decision, this is a fair contract.
So I, I, I don't recall or I, I don't know that I, that I have seen that same thing, perhaps if I did, I, I'd be able to comment more, more specifically to, to what you're, what you're asking, but let me put into context how agreements like this ultimately produce themselves. This is, these types of agreements are typically about the makeup of the governing body that is considering those matters, the direction given to a staff by that governing body, it may be about the specific recommendations given to the governing body by a staff, the, the elements of a franchise agreement and the costing of, if, if you're just solely looking at costing, so, I mean, let's, the elephant in the room is obviously the, the rates and there is dissatisfaction in the community regarding the commercial rates that are in the, the franchise agreement. But those, those rates are based, at least in part from what I've seen, on strategic direction provided to the staff negotiating team. strategic direction provided to the staff negotiating team, not based on the whim of the consulting group. And things that go into establishing rates, both residential and commercial, are things like labor rates for, you know, operating the franchise, the equipment trucks, just sink trucks, if you will, for operating that, the tipping fees at the various locations that trash needs to be taken to. Not all of the, the trash or recyclables collected by our franchise hauler can simply be taken up to the Kiefer Road landfill and dumped for $35 a ton, which is on the lower end of what they probably end up paying. Things like food waste needs to be taken to sites that can range, it's much more expensive to dispose of things like that. They need to be taken to sites that don't exist in this county, that, and, and that may cost anywhere from $80 to $120 a ton. You have vehicle miles traveled to, to, to take all that. So when you're taking a look at the cost of providing the service, there's a lot of variables that go into establishing what those rates are. Then, when you, when you back up and you're, you're taking a look at ultimately what forms itself over perhaps a number of meetings and over a number of discussions as to what the city wants to achieve, a collective decision on the city's part, not necessarily the franchise hauler, but the, the city's part of what it wants to achieve with the new franchise agreement. The direction that, that this city, broad overview direction that this city provided, was they wanted a franchise agreement that would achieve the recycling mandates as stated by CalRecycle, the state of California, the governor and the legislature that passed and approved those pieces of legislation. So we wanted a franchise agreement that addressed that. We wanted a franchise agreement also that had residential and commercial paying their fair share of the costs. Those are not just words. Those translate into costing variables that are gonna be plugged in to a methodology to come up with rates. Another variable that is clear and present but hasn't been stated so far as I'm aware is taking a look at the size of our commercial, a universe of commercial customers. I think there may be something around it. It might be just under 180 commercial accounts that Cal Waste picks up for. And so when you're identifying the costs, the overall cost burden of picking up commercial trash in your own, or the commercial operation, and you're only applying that across a universe of 180 accounts, now all of a sudden, the math is gonna have those rates be different than if it was being applied over 300 accounts, or 500, or 1,000. And so those are some of the variables that don't easily translate when you're comparing to Stockton, or even to Lowdi, or to Sacramento, or to some other area. But those are the things that are involved in the mathematics. And one of the things that candidly I want R3 to be able to do is to develop a report that would walk us through some of that in layman's terms, and have us all be able to know and confront the, the calculus of these variables and how they interplay jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and certainly how they play a role in, with GALT. But first and foremost, what we want to try to do, to do is pick up where we left off, try to address the, this commercial rate structure, and see if we can work with our franchise hauler to make some, to see if there's room to make some form of modification. But we cannot be afraid, at this point in time, to work with a group like R3 because we want to theorize, or we want to adopt uninformed statements out there that somehow they're the cause of this. I just, I haven't seen it yet. If I see it, I will come and tell you that I see it. But I think that when we, when, when we begin to understand the complexity of how rates work in this jurisdiction and jurisdiction to jurisdiction, it's gonna paint a much different picture for this council.
Thank you. And one more question, just, not a question, just clarification. I believe we talk to each other just for the public. You know, when there was a franchise contract, when R3 involved, and I think for Cal Waste, they pay $50,000 and we pay $25,000, can you, clarification to the public, is not Cal Waste paid them, they are just hired by, not hired by the Cal Waste?
That's right. Consulting firms like R3, but specifically R3, do not work for any private waste hauler. They work only for public jurisdictions like your council. And, and so similarly, if I put on a, my community development director hat, when a development comes in, and, or a developer comes in, they want to build a shopping mall, or they want to put in a grocery store or subdivision, they may need to complete an environmental impact report as a part of that. It's just part of California law, again. And what, the city doesn't pay for it. The residents of the community don't pay for that. Who pays for that is the developer. But the city hires the consultant, because the consultant will work for the city. Why? Because the consultant needs to give the city an independent environmental review. If they work for the developer, it's, there's a conflict of interest. So in those situations, we take a fee, the, the, the cost of that fee from the developer, and we use it to pay for the cost of that environmental impact report so that our citizens aren't having to, to, to front that cost. Similarly, with the franchise waste hauler negotiations that we just went through, and that I can tell you that I've been through in other jurisdictions, we require the waste hauler to pay all or part of the fee of the city hiring an expert. And it almost universally happens. I think that in very large cities and large jurisdictions, they may have a staff that is plentiful enough to be able to do what the consultant would do. We don't have that, and we do not have that in-house expertise. So we required Cal Waste to make a deposit of $49,000. The city also contributed about $25,000, I think, to, to that cost. That was a choice that, that was made at the time. But R3 worked only for the city, and Cal Waste was required to cover part of that cost.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. We have Kami Martin.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I am Kami Martin. From that discussion, I just ascertained that we have three things, compliance, ordinance, and contract renegotiation. The only one of which I saw in the resolution was compliance. So I'm going to speak to what I read. I stand before you tonight to speak regarding the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an on-call services contract with R3 Consulting Group. In reading the resolution, it is very specific as to what it covers. It provides authorization for the city manager to execute this contract at a cost of $25,000 each per year for this year and next year for a total of up to $50,000. Further, it specifically states, whereas additional guidance to help ensure compliance will be required in the provision of waste and recycling services to the community. In a nutshell, we want to pay R3 to ensure that we're in compliance. However, per Article VI Division requirements of the City of Galt Cal Waste Agreement, Cal Waste is already required to fully implement and achieve set diversion goals, provided there are no reasonable justifications for why they're unable to meet goal. My point is that what is being requested here is already assigned as the responsibility of Cal Waste. Essentially, as this resolution currently reads, we're requesting to pay R3 up to $50,000 over the next two years for a service that Cal Waste is already contracted to perform. Additionally, while there are many feet at which blame can be placed for the recent wave of dissatisfaction with this contract, R3 is most certainly included on that list. From what I understand, R3 failed to bring to the attention of staff or council that some of the trash recycling rates would be increasing to some four, five, six, 700 times their current rates. One would think that such an impact would be worthy of at least one bullet in a PowerPoint presentation, given their role, you know, consulting. In looking at R3's history with the city, I would hope that current council and staff would take a long, hard look at what is necessary to ensure compliance, given how tonight's proposed resolution is written. If we don't trust Cal Waste to do so, why was this specifically included in their contract? In closing, I want to change gears and quickly go over something that I've brought to the attention of council and staff many times in the past, the city website. In researching documents in preparation for this meeting, I attempted to locate the last consulting resolution that we approved, again, to consult with R3. This time, it was back in 2017 and for three years to the tune of $100,000. I was not only unable to locate the document, but the links that were embedded in the agenda, which are supposed to lead to the agenda-related documents, all went to a sign-up sheet for the Bird Festival. To say that I'm frustrated by the lack of access to city documents would be an understatement. To have to send a request to our city clerk for anything and everything is a waste of city resources as well as my time. I can certainly understand why something as seemingly simple as a lack of access to public documents would easily discourage constituent participation in this arena, and wish to formally request action be taken to ensure reasonable access to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any more discussion? Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I first want to thank the community for coming out, our, our commercial customers for coming out and voicing your concerns about the, the rates. I want to thank staff and interim city manager Hagelin for getting on this pretty quickly. I know we've been working pretty quickly on this, at least for the last two weeks since the last council meeting. And then to have an item quickly come back on that we could discuss our thoughts related to the, the waste rates is impressive. So we're gonna, at least, there's information out there, and I'll just put it out there on social media, that council members aren't responding or doing things like that. And I think, I think it needs to be pointed out that part of being a council member, there are laws that restrict what we can and can't do, and what forums in which we can have open discussion amongst council members. And so, the interest of being compliant with the Brown Act, I personally choose to be very selective on what I put on social media, and certainly responding to things. And so, I will say this, and I haven't talked to all council members, but I can imagine that certainly myself and talking to the interim city manager, this is not an issue that we take lightly. We certainly want to do whatever we can to help support our, our local businesses, including our waste removal contractor, franchiser, because they're a big part of the city as well. And so, I just felt it important to say that. I know we had some public comment at our last council meeting, and certainly at our workshop last week. But it was a little frustrating on, at the last council meeting to not, to not say a whole lot, because it was an agendized item. And I, and I just, I hold that very near and dear to my heart, because I think the, what the, and I'm gonna go a little off, off-topic here, city attorney, but I think the Brown Act really provides for open discussion in a public process. And that, to me, is important, that we, that we help maintain that, because if things aren't agendized and, and, you know, we have a discussion about it, people that didn't see it on an agenda, because it wasn't on there, didn't have an ability to participate. So we will do, I'm sure, we will do what we can to, to address this issue, not only from the city level, but in working with our local businesses, to ensure that we can continue to have a prosperous city. So I'll stop there. But, and as it relates to R3, you know, we hired an interim city manager. And, and, and I feel, Tom, you've been really upfront, have dug deep into a lot of issues, not just this one. And, and, and I, and I trust your judgment. And so I would, and, you know, if, if something comes up, I would have expected that you would say that you'd come back and, and let us know. So I, I feel comfortable voting to approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the speed of staff coming in. I know you guys have put in a lot of hours, probably a lot of overtime. And, you know, I've said before, the businesses are the heart of our community. We get that. They support everything, and we just want, including Cal Waste. And we really want to work together. But we're limited in what we can say publicly. And in a group, we have to do it at council meetings. So just be patient with us and know that we're working with, and working on this.
Since this is such a big topic, and part of a larger topic, I, I want to touch on one other thing. I did have a question similar to what Ms. Martin asked regarding why would we bring R3 in to work on something that, that Cal Waste has already contracted to do. But for me, I really am mostly concerned with the part B of this. And I feel like, you know, I feel like it's necessary to help with fixing the issue here. I would like to note that, a lot of people don't realize that, Tom, when you were part of, when you were in Galt in 1991, 93, what year?
Right.
That you actually were involved in negotiations with Cal Waste at that time, correct? So this is not your first rodeo with this, especially with the, with the same franchisee. So, so when you, when you come to me, or in the council, and you, and you recommend things about a complex solution like we're dealing with right now, it weighs heavily on me, your recommendation, because, again, I'm not an expert in that by any means. And, you know, and no matter how much I dig and how much research I do, it's still, you know, at the end of the day. I would like to make a quick statement, just real quick, because I feel like last time we weren't able to. But, you know, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of people talking out on the internet and online, coming in public, you know, there's a lot of blame going around about how that we got to where we are. And, and, you know, I think it's really pointless to even dig around on that. I think that, you know, I think there's a lot of blame that could go around. You know, people have blamed the old council, they've blamed the old city manager, the staff, the consultant, they blamed Cal Waste, they blamed the new council, they blamed the businesses themselves for not paying attention to their mailers, they blamed the chamber for not speaking up and arguing on behalf of businesses. Everybody's getting blamed. And I think that it doesn't fix anything to keep blaming. I think what we need to do now is, we need to roll up our sleeves and do what we can do to fix what's going on moving forward. And there's been people saying that because the city doesn't come out publicly, and, and I personally will say that I have been on Facebook a little bit and tried to put some facts out there, but they seem to have gotten buried very quickly in the, in the, in the stream from days ago, and people forgot what I put. But, you know, people are saying, well, we're not posting anything. They don't, they haven't heard anything. It's like crickets from the city. We don't care because we're not doing, because we're not talking, because we don't say anything, we're not doing anything. I can tell you that nothing could be further from the truth. The city manager, the city attorney, staff, everybody has been working super hard to explore options with this. There has been open dialogue with Cal Waste, and our city, together with them, we've sat down, my councilmember Sandu and I sat down with the owners of Cal Waste in a meeting a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, there was, it was a good dialogue, and, and we, I think we all want the same thing. We all want to try to see if there's something, okay? So I believe that, you know, the public needs to know that, that we all want the same thing. We want to find a solution. We want to find a solution as fast as possible. And I think this resolution tonight with R3 is part of that, because our businesses are begging us for quick action. It's a very complex situation. It's difficult to understand, and there's a lot of working parts with this. If anybody saw our budget meeting last week, we had a $1.3 million deficit. So on top of trying to fix something, we have that on top of that. So it makes it even more difficult. But I can tell you, there has not been a single day in this last three weeks that I personally have not spent time either talking to a business owner, talking with a city manager, talking to citizens, making phone calls to other city councils, talking to mayors of other cities, talking to other waste companies, doing research, emails, phone calls, in person, all the time. It's all I've been doing for three weeks. I have immersed myself in this, and I, that's all I think about at the moment. So for businesses and the citizens to say that we don't care, we're not doing anything just because you don't see, and we don't, we don't publicly say it, I want to tell you that we are. And, you know, the council and the city do care about our businesses, and we want to fix this. And all I can say is that we're fix this, and all I can say is that we're going to try, and we can't make any promises, but we're going to try. And if, if any of you know me and what I've said in the past and what I'm about, is that when I say I'm going to try, I'm going to do it. So, I appreciate, you know, everybody's patience in letting us try to solve this, and I appreciate Tom and our staff that have been working on this, for your super hard work on this so far, and I hopefully will continue, and we'll try to come to something very soon, I hope. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an on-call consulting service agreement with R3 Consulting Group for consulting services related to the provision of solid waste and recycling services with a maximum of 25,000 per fiscal year, and authorizing appropriation of 25,000 per fiscal year in the current two-year budget?
So moved.
Second.
I believe that was moved by councilmember Lozano, and seconded by councilmember Campion. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
Mayor? If I could just interject one, one point, I just want to clarify that the resolution that talks about ensuring compliance and, and our, having our three assist us in that isn't doing the same thing that Cal Waste is required to do under the franchise agreement. It, it is true that one of the substantive aspects of this franchise agreement, which really distinguishes itself from almost all others in California, at least at this point in time, is the fact that the city has indeed transferred risk from itself to the franchise hauler, who must meet the Cal recycle standards in accordance with the Cal recycle schedule. Nonetheless, the city still has jurisdictional responsibility, and the compliance we're talking about is ensuring that the waste hauler complies with the provisions of the franchise agreement itself. We can't adopt a franchise agreement and let it collect dust on a shelf. We have to be certain that all of the measures required of the franchise hauler are being addressed, and so that's what we mean by that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haglin. Moving on to Community Development Department, the electronic billboard contract amendment by Mr. Arias.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item we have before you is a request to amend the Real Estate and Advisory Services contract with Terra Realty Advisors, or TRA. TRA is the consulting firm assisting the city with the electronic billboard at 500 Fairway Drive. Prior to talking about the current request, I want to go over the back, a little bit of background on how we got to where we are, because I think the new council really wasn't a part of the discussion to kind of get to the point we're at today with the billboard. So, this billboard project, well, started well before May, but in May, we received, of last year, we received, so a year ago, a billboard sign assessment. And that sign assessment basically evaluated three sites in Galt along Highway 99 to evaluate whether or not they were good for placement for a billboard. So, the sites we looked at were 99 in Twin Cities, Highway 99 at, you know, A Street, roughly around where the high school is, and then 500 Fairway Drive. The site at Twin Cities and by the high school proved to be poor. Visibility was poor, and in particular, the high school site was in a, was in a Caltrans landscape district, and I'll explain that a little bit later. But the site at 500 Fairway Drive proved to be very good for placement of a billboard. In fact, you know, for those who've been here for a while, you know there used to be a billboard, a static billboard out on that site. So, with that site assessment, the city council gave us authority to go out, or actually to enter into an agreement with TRA for a contract, to go out for a request for proposal services, to seek sign companies to place a billboard at 500 Fairway Drive. But prior to going out for that RFP services, we had to do some work internally. Our code did not allow for billboards, so we had to amend the code to allow for billboards. And also, Caltrans regulates billboards along the freeway, so we had to make a couple changes to the site at 500 Fairway Drive. We had to basically rezone the site from public quasi-public to commercial, because Caltrans only allows it on commercially zoned properties. And then, because we had to do the rezone, we had to do a general plan amendment from public quasi-public to commercial. So, that general plan amendment, rezone, and zoning text amendment required a lot of activity, and so those meetings you see on the right-hand side all supported that. A planning commission meeting in September, that meeting was continued. One of the items they recommended is that we go to a Parks and Recreation Commission, which we did the following month, and then that same month, we came back to planning commission for a recommendation to council on those entitlements, and then council approved those in November of last year, and then in December was the second reading of the rezone and also the text amendment. And I think that's the meeting most of the new council took part in. So, that was the only shot you really had at it. So, for, for me, the meat and potatoes of what we did for the, to pave the way for the billboard was really the zoning code update and the text amendment. And so, what we did when we allowed them is we allowed them with regulation, and some of the regulations that we put in are shown on the screen. So, we require a sign to be placed no closer than 200 feet from the nearest residential, and that's actually an increase of 100 feet from the Caltrans standard. Caltrans has a minimum 100-foot requirement. Then we have a distance of 1,000 feet from other digital billboards, 500 feet from a static. Then we placed size limits on the actual sign face they can have. And then the other is not located in a Caltrans designated landscape freeway district. I mentioned that a little bit early. Or, Caltrans, again, regulates signs, and one of the regulations is they have, you know, what they call landscape districts, and I think it's just enhanced landscaping on the freeway, so they then don't allow signage adjacent to it. So, if you look at the map on the screen, it shows red areas along Highway 99. Those are land, designated landscape districts with Caltrans. So, Caltrans would only allow signs in the green portions, but then zone commercial. And for us, one of the other development criteria we put in is that it has to be zoned highway commercial. So, with a mixture of poor visibility, not located in a landscape district, the correct zoning, we think that it's very limited in where another sign can be placed. I believe in the existing city limits. The only additional sign that may be able to work is at the Cimberhorn Commercial Site. So, when the city expands north of Twin Cities on 99, I think that does change a little bit, depending upon the zoning that goes up there. But currently, the only site remaining feasible for another sign is at that Cimberhorn Commercial Site. And then lastly, it is we require development agreement for entitlement from the sign company. So, after paving the way for a billboard sign, we then issued the RFP. We issued that in December last year. I think we sent out over 20 RFP requests to sign companies. We received three responses to our request. You see Veal Outdoor Advertising at the top, you know, and this is a summary, obviously, what they proposed. They proposed $5,000 a month lease rate, or 20% of gross revenue, whichever is greater. They have a reimbursement inclusion as well. Mesa Outdoor was somewhat similar, $4,000 per month lease rate, or 25% of gross revenue, whichever is greater, and also another reimbursement. And Clear Channel was clearly the superior offer. They had a $9,000 a month lease rate, but what they did differently is they offered an option. We can go with a flat 9,000 a month lease rate, or go with a $6,000 per month lease rate with 25% of gross revenue, whichever is greater. None of the others offered that option. They basically had the minimum manual guarantee with a percentage of gross revenue, whichever is greater. So then Clear Channel also offered a reimbursement, and then some processing cost. Clear Channel, I would say that we're in the process of negotiating a different lease rate. What we responded with was, we wanted, we wanted to equal out to about $100,000 a year, minimum annual guarantee, with some option of having gross revenue. So, we're currently in the process of negotiating with them on that. What I like about the Clear Channel offer, too, was that it was at the maximum that we had predicted in the earlier communication with council. When we were coming forward to council, we had estimated an annual lease rate of 50 to $100,000 per month, so it was nice to get the maximum we thought we would receive.
$100 per year.
And so, then those dates on the other side basically are related to that RFP process.
So, Chris, you said per month, but you meant 100,000 per year.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. That would be nice.
I'm like, whoa.
Thank you. So, that's, so that leads us to where we are today. We're here at city council seeking a contract amendment. The contracts we have currently with TRA, or we've had, were the initial contract for the billboard sign assessment of $4,500, and RFP services of $11,000. And now, we're asking for an additional, this is the second amendment, for $5,000 to do lease negotiation and also entitlements. So, the total to date would be what you see there, the 20,500. The money does come from, come from Parks and Rec, the 06 fund, but it should be noted, as mentioned back here, all of the companies basically included a reimbursement cost. So, if we are, if we do move forward with a company to do, build and maintain a sign on that property, we are reimbursed for these costs. If we don't do anything, then the funds do come from Parks and Rec, and we would incur those costs. So, the next steps are, we are currently in review of the lease agreement with Clear Channel. Once the city and Clear Channel are close to agreement on the lease and the other agreements, we will come back, well, actually, Clear Channel will submit a city application. Once the application is submitted and goes through staff review, we will then schedule it for Parks and Rec Commission and Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then to city council for final consideration. And that concludes our presentation. We're asking council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the contract with TRA, and Scott Sheldon with TRA and staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any discussion? Rich?
I have a couple of questions, Chris, and I apologize, I didn't get with you ahead of time on this. A couple of questions, just to bring us up to speed as we are over a year into this project, right?
Right.
How did, what was the genesis of this? Was this someone coming to us, asking to put a billboard up?
No, this was staff-driven, looking to replace a billboard that was onsite and looking to generate additional funds for the city. So, that interest early from a variety of different staff resulted in going out with that, getting that site's assessment to evaluate sites to see if they were feasible.
Okay. And how far, I'm glad you went back to that map, because, how far is that from those residential, how far will it be?
250 feet.
That seems awfully close. I mean, even, I don't know what 250 feet is on that map, but anywhere on that property seems awfully close to those, to the residents there. Certainly not the commercial, but the residential community right behind it, that's somewhat concerning. Have we done, done any outreach to that group?
We have, we have. I mean, we've noticed all the meetings that were going forward. We did have some people attend the meetings that we've had in the past. I know the homes there have gotten the notices. You're right to be concerned about the proximity to the residential, because we are, too. One of the other requirements we put in the development standards in the code is light limitations. So, one of the, the biggest impact they're going to have is if it's bright. And so, we do have specific requirements for light levels on the sign, and then also, in early discussion with Clear Channel, we believe that the way the sign is going to sit on the site is basically going to be angled away from the residence, so that any light that is generated would be focused toward the freeway and not toward the residences.
Okay. Can I just?
Can I ask you one more thing on the light? Answer one more thing? If, because I know your daughter plays softball. If you ever driven by the softball field at night, they're pretty bright into the residents, and this will be a lot less intrusive than those softball lights.
Yeah, and I would say, in general, light levels is kind of a pet peeve of mine. For new development, we really pay attention to, you know, spill over for light, you know, typically require development to have full cutoff fixtures to come down, not only to not impact the nearby residences or nearby uses, to really limit trespass on the night sky. So, we, we pay, we try to pay attention to the light levels. So, the requirement is, is that they got to give us a photometric, so we can see what those light levels are coming off that sign. And so, you can measure that stuff and see what it is they're, they're giving off.
Okay. And one last question, or, I guess, yeah, it is a question. When going through this process, was there consideration of who the target market would be that would rent space on this sign? And, and here's why I ask that. You know, we've, we've been talking a lot about, and I know it's $100,000 a year, I, I get that, but one of my concerns is, is we've been talking about sales tax leakage into other communities. In my mind, and I had this conversation with the interim city manager today, as part of the conversation, I can really envision companies and corporations from other jurisdictions that have businesses in other jurisdictions buying time on our sign that we're getting $100,000 a year and losing potentially much more than $100,000 a year into a different community. I don't know that this type of advertising would be necessarily conducive to some of the businesses that we have here in our community. Like, I can't imagine that, you know, a family-owned, small restaurant would, would be able to afford to do, to, to rent space. And so, was that considered as, as a point?
It was a discussion, but I think you are correct, that it is hard for a mom and pop to afford the time on that billboard. We do plan to give a discount to chamber members to help encourage them to, you know, advertise on the sign, but in general, based on the cost, you know, you could be right. And maybe Scott can kind of talk about some of the costs that, or the prices that they have for the sign, and then, you know, obviously, if we give the chamber discount, we're trying to encourage the local group to advertise, but it can be expensive.
Well, and I drive by a freeway sign like this every day, and I don't, I don't see a lot of Galt businesses advertising on that sign. And that's a sign that, if you're coming southbound, leads right into our city. So, again, you know, I understand it's $100,000 a year, and we could really use that right now, but I, I'm just having a hard time with just those couple of things that, that...
Understand.
They're stumbling blocks, for me at least.
Okay.
Does he want to answer?
I, I guess I, and I hear what you're saying, Rich. I guess I, I don't see the competitive nature to the same businesses. Mom and pops in Elk Grove, Sacramento, advertising, so I don't know that it's a, a level playing field when it comes to the advertising community. You know, I, and I think I know which signs you're talking about. I mean, the car dealership and up near Kaiser, I think, or Mack Road, there's a couple of them. I don't know what's going to be advertised on there, but I have a feeling that there are companies and corporations that are huge, and that can afford that. So, I don't know that the competitive nature of the advertising would really have, and it may have an effect, the, the thing that would discourage me, i- it would be nice to have local businesses in Galt, whether it be big or small, whether it be Walmart or Starbucks or whatever, advertise in order to attract those participants, or those, those potential clients here in Galt. So, I mean, it's, I'm just not sure.
So, I actually was following this from way back when it was in the old council. I agree with a lot of what you're saying, and I also kind of agree with what...
I agree with a lot of what Rich was saying, and I also kind of agree with what Kurt was saying. I really don't think this billboard is about advertising for Galt businesses. I agree with Kurt in respect that I don't think that the businesses that are going to be able to afford to be on there are going to be somebody that's going to compete with a business here. With the exception of maybe a couple, like if somebody's driving on the road and they're saying, hey, we want to, you know, it's late, it's eleven o'clock, we want to get a hotel room. And they see the billboard, they go, oh, next, you know, six miles ahead, there's a something, something. And they're just going to keep going and frequent that hotel instead of the ones. But, let's be honest, the position of this billboard is not helpful to businesses in Galt. You're pretty much through all the main exits in Galt. By the time you see the billboard, you would literally have to just swerve off the road to get off on Fairway and backtrack into town. So, I don't think that, you know, advertising on that billboard is going to be something. For me, it's just about the money the billboard brings in. I think it's always been about that. I don't, I think, you know, we would be naive to think that we're going to advertise on there. I do know that there's going to be some, I was under the impression that we were able to maybe do some advertising for the market and maybe some events that Galt's having. We're going to get some time on that billboard too, a little bit.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so, that's, that's an advantage. So, for me, originally, when it was like, we're going to be promised fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, I was just like, okay, well, it could be fifty-one thousand. To me, it's like, you know, do we sacrifice our skyline for fifty-one thousand dollars? I have to be honest, I like the fact that it's a hundred now and that we worked up that number. But, the bigger picture here for me is this. I, I think, in regards to what Rich was saying, you know, we're, we're... Unfortunately, this happens with a lot of things that get presented to council. You know, we get into a certain point where it's like, we're at a point where it's like, you really can't say no anymore at that point because you've already got vested money. We're sixteen thousand in this thing right now, and if we approve this tonight, we're going to be twenty. If we decide that we just don't like the billboard or a public outcry is, is not in favor of it, and we decide to, to not approve it, then we just cost Parks and Recreation twenty thousand dollars, which they couldn't afford a penny at this point. So, it, what I feel like, and I was talking to Tom about this, I feel like we're at a crossroads right now where we have to make some hard decisions right now because the more things, the further we venture down this road and spend more money, the further committed we are to this. And we would basically be committing, we would be committing ourselves to something. And I think so, you know, I'm not saying I'm in favor of the billboard, I'm not. I, with Rich, the hundred thousand is a lot of money. Parks and Rec could really use that money. But, when I look at this process as if, let's just look at this timeline here. So, we approve another forty-five hundred, which I'm understanding the forty-five hundred is to go back and negotiate the contract, right?
Well, right, so, we're doing lease negotiation and then entitlement process.
Okay. So, we do, say, let's say we approve the forty-five hundred, and then we go back and we do that. Well, then, the first time that the, the public is allowed to say anything would be, on your timeline of one through five would be number three, where Parks and Recreation Commission, people could come in and they could, they could say how they feel about it there. And then, after that would be the, the Planning Commission where people could speak, and then ultimately, public speaking at, at city council. We're at the tail end, we're at the right at the end. It's like, I almost feel like it's like I go buy, it's like I go buy five acres of property and I pay for all the permits and all that, and then I go tell my wife, hey, we're going to build this house. And she's like, I don't want a house right there. And I'm like, well, I've already spent all that money, I've already gone this far. I feel like we're at that point, so I feel like the council needs to be really, do some soul searching and decide if this is something we want, and I'm not saying it don't, but if we, if it's something we want, then, you know, I think we're, because I think we're committing ourselves at some point, we're going to be committed. I would like to see personally, I don't know if we could do this, but I wish that we could get some public input before we spend this forty-five hundred, because I would like to hear from the public before I spend another nickel on this process. That's just me. So, I don't know if that's something we could do, but...
I want to point out the, you know, the screen, and it shows the public meetings we've had on this topic. So, and there's another one. So, I mean, I feel like I've been talking about this project quite a bit at a bunch of public meetings. And so, there was a lot of opportunity for the public to weigh in. Was it enough? Maybe not, because we didn't have too much detail, you know, to get into the, like, sign specifics. So, you know, maybe that is a, you know, fair point. But, I think we've, we've been out in the public for quite a bit with this project.
Well, I know early on, there was some, and I was even misunderstanding the size of the billboard. I remember there was talk about, and then finally, you guys did some, some kind of, some Photoshop pictures of, with the size of it. And it was actually smaller than what I originally had thought. And I think that kind of changed the concerns of some people. But, I just, I'm just saying, and I get that there's outreach. There's a lot of things we have a lot of outreach on, and then people still say, we didn't know.
Very true.
It happens all the time. But, I just, I just feel like, like I said, I just feel like, you know, if we vote tonight, I feel like it's, it's going to be really hard to turn direction, and it's going to have to be full speed ahead. So, I just want the council to be cognizant of that. And, and I think, I honestly think if we vote forty-five hundred tonight, I don't think it's going to matter if people come to the Parks and Recreation or the Planning Commission and, and come in strong opposition, because at that point, we're like, we just wasted twenty grand. I mean, I feel like it's like that. So, it's like, it's almost like putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I feel like the city would, would do more outreach in the beginning. And I know you said you have, but I feel like, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not sure why the outreach is even at the end of the timeline, to be honest with you. But anyways, I just add into what you said, Rich, that's my two cents on this.
So, we have had a billboard there in the past.
Correct. Static billboard.
It got taken down, and there's still a billboard there, kind of now, a little one, but there was a big one.
Right, there's a market sign, there's a sign for the, a large market sign there now. But, the market sign is like an onsite sign, there was a static billboard. I don't know why it was taken down.
It was, it was taken down because the city entered into a contract in the sixties, which had a recurring ten-year anniversary where the rent was one hundred dollars per month. And if you didn't give notice within, I think it was a thirty-day period, the contract renewed for another ten years.
Wow.
I had discovered that, challenged it, and then about six years later, we canceled it. But, it was one of those things that was buried in records.
So, they took it down?
So, we gave them notification to vacate the property.
Okay.
I think that was two thousand eight.
Yes. That's why it's...
Okay, so, it's like a, the...
I know you would know that, because you've been around since like...
I was writing...
One last question I had is regarding the ordinance. So, we changed the ordinance for the billboards to allow for this, right?
Correct.
So, I talked to Tom about this, and he said I would need to clarify with you. So, when we changed the ordinance, did the previous ordinance say we couldn't have billboards, and we changed it to allow billboards, or was it just changed to allow digital billboards?
To allow billboards.
Billboards, period.
Correct.
So, we went from not being allowed, not allowing billboards to now we are.
Correct. But, they're limited in where they could go.
Right, with the spacing and all that, right?
Yeah. So, it's, it's very difficult. But, you bring up a good point. If we were to not pursue what we have here, it wouldn't prevent somebody else then from coming in behind and then coming forward with a proposal. Now, you could feel free to, I guess, consider that, but...
Well, my thought on that would be, because I'm not a fan of billboards. I never once have I said, oh, I love that city we've traveled through with all those billboards. I mean, I just, you know, I mean, so, it's, it's a catch twenty-two, you know, it's a lot of money. I was thinking like, well, if we're allowing billboards now, you know, like, maybe after, if this billboard were to proceed forward, we could maybe change our municipal code back and not allow any other billboards.
We certainly, you certainly could do that, absolutely.
I understand, I'm just throwing that out there.
And there's only a couple of spots that they're even allowed by Caltrans, when he showed the map.
Well, and by local ordinance.
Right.
Because they all work to constrain locations.
So, based on, again, the red, per Caltrans, you can't go there because it's a landscape district. The green, Caltrans would allow, but based on other criteria, it won't necessarily work. So, for example, because of other existing billboards, once we come in here, no other billboards would be able to come in south of, in this area here. North in this green area, there's very limited highway commercial zoning. There's only one highway commercial zone up in here by the old Royal Delta, but there's already signs there. So, nothing can go there. You travel up, there's no highway commercial zoning here. It's all residential on the east side and on the west side. I will make sure not to zone it highway commercial. It's actually light industrial for the expansion of the industrial part. So, the only other commercial properties you have up here are up around Arco, well, hopefully, Arco at some point. There's, 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 the visibility is just very poor. There's no place to put it, because we looked, we looked to put a sign up there. So, the only possibility left is in this highway commercial location right here. And even that is, is unknown. They would have to go through the process to figure that out.
If somebody came to the city and wanted to put a billboard up and it was in one of the areas where it's allowed, it doesn't have to be council-approved. If it's, it does still, even if it checked all the boxes, we'd still...
Correct, it still comes through to council, it's got to go to planning commission for a recommendation, and then city council for approval, approval of the agreement.
Okay.
Correct, the lease agreement. So, you know, as planners, we're trained to hate signs. I mean, we see them as they're visual clutter, you know, they get in the way of the view shed. So, by nature, we tend to not like them. So, we look at like Highway ninety-nine and what is the impact of a sign on Highway ninety-nine? And frankly, I think the sign becomes the view shed. The developed world becomes the view shed on Highway ninety-nine. It is not, this is no disrespect to the road, it's just not the most scenic road we have. Now, would I recommend putting in a billboard along a preserve on ninety-nine or five? Or certainly like on Highway one, whether you have more scenery? Absolutely not. But, again, to me, the built-up environment becomes the view shed, and ninety-nine certainly embodies that.
You said you noticed you reached out to the people that live in that closest area? So, that, what is that? Is that Mel, no, that's not Melody.
Glendale, it's Glendale.
Glendale, right, Glendale, yeah. So, you said you reached out to them, like, they got something in the mail, or what?
Right, they had something in the mail. So, we do, from the project site, a mailer, a five-hundred-foot radius. So, everyone within that five-hundred-foot radius receives that notice. We did have business owners located further down Fairway come and really oppose the project. They felt that they, the billboard would distract from their existing monument signs, so they thought it would, the billboard would hurt them. We looked to see if there was any data to support what a billboard does to existing signs. And actually, I think there was, there's no data out there, but after talking to people, it seemed to be that the billboard could actually help them because it actually puts eyes toward that side and maybe helps them see that.
You're talking about giddens spread into the giant thermometer and that?
And the car wash.
You know, actually, I was on a planning mission that time. I don't think so anybody from residence...
No, no residents showed up.
Only from business. I think the one business.
But, the absence of the residents doesn't mean that we won't protect them, because really, the role of planning is to avoid land use conflicts. So, when we avoid those land use conflicts, we'll work hard to make sure that whatever we're doing doesn't impact those people sleeping at night.
And the residents behind Burger King, are they zoned commercial?
There is a band of commercial zoning where Burger King is, but behind him is residential.
It's not commercial? Okay. Their house is commercial, they're going to open a business. Okay. Do we exhaust that? All right, do you, okay, let's get a motion. To adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the real estate and advisory services contract with TRA Realty Advisors Incorporated to increase the compensation to TRA by forty-five hundred dollars to assist the city with lease negotiations and entitlement process for an electronic billboard at five hundred Fairway Drive.
I would recommend that motion.
Made by Councilmember Campion. Can I second it? I'll second it. All right, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Was there a second?
Yeah, I'm sitting. Councilmember Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano? Campion?
Yes.
I lost my... Lozano?
No.
Thank you. Mayor Lamson?
Yes.
So, motion passes, three to two. All right, city council meetings on July second and August sixth.
Yes, our staff is recommending canceling the city council meeting of July second due to a light agenda and also the holiday that's on Thursday, July fourth. The second part is National Night Out, which is on August sixth, a regular city council meeting night. In order for city council to participate, we're recommending moving the start time to three o'clock P.M. National Night Out starts at six o'clock P.M.
We did that last year and it worked?
Correct, I'll just have to make sure we're there on time.
Is this July second we're talking about?
Yes. July second, there's actually two requests. July second is to cancel the city council meeting due to the light agenda and also the holiday, which is on July fourth. The second part of the request is to change the meeting time of the August sixth meeting to three o'clock P.M.
I am in favor of the meeting on the sixth, but, or the one for the National Night Out. But, I mean, how do we know, how do we know that far in advance of the, if the agenda is going to be light?
In addition, I know I won't be here.
Okay.
City, we have a internal document to plan our calendar out, sixty days at least in advance, if not longer.
But, things do get added, though.
Correct.
I mean, in light of things going on right now, there could very well be something. How many meetings do we have between then and there? Two?
Correct.
Two meetings between the, now and the second?
Last year, we canceled the July meeting as well during the week of Fourth of July, Fourth of July, and changed the meeting time of the August sixth to three o'clock P.M.
All right, that's the only question I had, I was just concerned with how far out it was.
Any other discussion?
I'm making a motion, do we, we need a vote on this, right?
Sure, who want to make a, may I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel the July second meeting and to change the time of the August sixth, two thousand nineteen, meeting to three o'clock.
Second.
Okay. Made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you.
All right, any comments by staff? Should we start with Ms. Tyson?
Nothing further to report, thank you.
Mr. Selling?
Yes, thank you, mayor, a couple of things. Just wanted to recognize that this week is international, I guess, I'll say international Public Works Week. And so, I just want to take a moment to, you know, recognize all the dedicated public work staff, past and present, that have, you know, put their efforts into building and maintaining the various transportation, water, wastewater, et cetera, infrastructure that we all, I don't know, say, take for granted, but we all enjoy every day and probably don't even realize, kind of thing, so. Definitely contributes to the health, safety, and quality of life of everyone, so. Just want to make that recognition. And then, the other one, in light of the upcoming Memorial Day holiday, just wanted to say thank you and pay tribute to all those men and women in our military who've made the ultimate sacrifice in serving our country, and we never forget them.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins?
One item, we had presented the Corollium Boulevard Master Plan to Planning Commission this month. And I wanted to let you know that we are starting the environmental process for it, and then we will bring that to, through the entitlement process closer to the end of the year. So, I would think that would be presented to you all by, hopefully, December of this year. But, I also wanted to mention that there's a National Roundabout Association or group, and they've got wind of our project, and they actually have recognized a GHD, formerly Omni Means, in the city for kind of being at the forefront of roundabout, the use of roundabouts. So, we are getting some recognition for our master plan, at least in the design phase, and our Twin Cities roundabouts.
All right, Ms. Hall, who are you hiring?
We are taking applications for the position of a city manager, H.R. Director, Police Officer, Wastewater System Operator, and Youth Sports Official for softball. So, we encourage anyone who's interested to go to our website and to apply.
Thank you. Chief Sockman?
I have nothing tonight.
Let me write that down, I have nothing.
My poker face went away. City Manager Hagman?
I have nothing further.
Ms. Hood?
I have nothing further, thank you.
All right. Any more comments from council, Mr. Campion?
I didn't mention earlier, the South County Habitat Preservation Plan also won an award for the Northern California District of the American Planning Association. They will be submitting that for statewide recognition later this year.
Nice. All right, Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, just two things. One, congratulations to Ms. Hall on her new position in a different community. The other piece is Vice Mayor Farmer and I are continuing to work as ad hoc committee to address the city manager recruitment. There will be more to come, probably in the next couple of weeks on that, with a larger update. So, I just wanted to kind of let the rest of the council know that we are, we haven't forgotten about it. and we've had a couple of meetings, and we're scheduled for another one on June twelfth. So, we'll come back shortly after that with, with an update.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sandu?
Yes, I did attend a public safety committee, I think, yesterday, and we discussed some issues, like, and one was the roundabout visibility on Twin City, and we discussed with the commission. The other was traffic safety at school site. And they were talking about some people, when they're dropping, they could have a tent or window. So, Chief is there, you know. So, the other thing, I also, as you know, attended last planning commission meeting. So, that's very interesting, that's, there was some comment about the master plan. And there was some citizen, they was not happy with the staff recommendation. So, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Yeah, I went to the Planning Commission as well, and heard some comments about the master plan. I think, how could we not get the, the attention of this supposed club with as many roundabouts that's we're proposing? I went to the library opening today. Apparently, it wasn't like the big to-do, but it was the soft opening. But, I was there, and, and, and a lot of people came, and it was, the place is beautiful. So, for those of you that attend the library, it is open again, and it's fancy in there, and it looks really good. It's like, I was told it was down to four bare walls, and everything's new, so floor to ceiling.
Maybe you can remind them to send us an invite next time.
Yeah, well, the, the official one is June eleventh, I believe, where they're gonna have Supervisors Holy, and it's gonna be more of a dedication, like, the real, that's probably why it wasn't like an official. I don't, I don't know how I heard about it, but I went, but, so, other than that, that's all I have.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Let's find grab a couple of worms.